For whatever reason, I will suggest here is I was talking. Jessica will probably be, we will artificially leave, she's at a passport opening. Running time, so she'll be here too. Okay. Everyone with a rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you everyone, good evening. We only have a three to four minutes pregnant, thus far, we're expecting four. Schedules were kind of challenging today, so Jessica may be joining us late, John will not be here this evening, so. Three of us, maybe some of four. Our first order of business before we get into things, we need to do a quick executive session. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to go into executive session, subject to one MRSA for our five six day personnel.
Second, thank you, can I get? Vote in favor, Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Three, zero, so we'll be brief, we'll be in there.
That's kind of a convenient deal. Other town places, they kick your audience out.
Yeah.
You know, we all have to leave. This works out.
Like a beachhead?
Like a beachhead?
And then we're like, what's it been? Yeah, listen, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Business in the world.
You're putting everything on the.
Right, yeah. Just a brief, last minute. Well, maybe just as.
Bye. Alright, thank you everyone, I'll go ahead and make a motion from out of executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Review.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure your microphone is working at this.
Hello.
Madam Chair, for the, you have six thirty.
Uh, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
You just used your clock. Um. Okay, approval of minutes from January ninth. Anyone with, any, any edits, anything? Okay.
Madam Chair, motion to accept the minutes from the town council meeting on one nine twenty-four as written.
Second.
Thank you, motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa. Aye.
Now I vote yes, motion passes three zero. Um. Next, we have the chargers warrants, I'll go ahead and, I just kind of, I'll make a motion. Motion to sign the charger warrant dated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion or things you want to call out?
I just have a question, I saw, I'm trying to find it, it might be, it won't be right now. Something about town of Sanford, there's a big sum there, I wasn't sure what that was.
Is that.
That is the quarterly billing for dispatch, it's about sixty-five thousand dollars. So you have sixty-seven thousand dollars, their quarterly payment to Sanford, they run the dispatch.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, anyway? Cool, we have motion on the table, all those in favor say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Lisa. Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. Alright, I have a few reports and presentations this evening, Tim is here from the Great Works Regional Land Trust. I think you're up next, if you want to come up and. Share what you got.
Jessica's in my swan ten, I'll turn that on. Try that. See if that works. No. Be close.
I can hear you, I don't know how.
Try it now, hello? No. We're gonna share now, hang on a minute. Right now.
Hello?
There he is.
There we go, I can hear myself. Thanks, thanks for putting me on the agenda tonight. Again, my name is Tim Smith, I'm a volunteer with the Great Works Regional Land Trust. I'm part of a team of staff and volunteers. Working on a project, the Salmon Falls. Paddle Waters Project, also here with me tonight is Jordan Kelly, he's the executive director. He's here, we're here to answer any questions and give you an update. On the project. And have some discussion about an updated budget. And I think I have some.
That's fine.
Slides?
You happen to have them open?
Well, I can start talking about, I can start talking about the first slide before it comes up, it was just sort of, I want, the first couple of slides, you just do sort of an update or. The Great Works Regional Land serves six communities, Elliott Wells, the three boroughs, and Agonquit. We provide conservation options to landowners, and that's our basic service. We're supported by about a thousand members, we have a staff of six. We've been around for about thirty-six years. And we have completed about a hundred and fifty-six projects. And protected about seven thousand, seven hundred acres. Of which ninety-one parcels that we own, and about thirty-two hundred acres that we own and manage. The Lass of Land Trust, and this particular project started in, four years ago, in two thousand and twenty, in the fall of two thousand and twenty. And has been started again by landowner contact. We have about three landowners that have came forward back then, were interested in conservation options for their property, it was on the Salmon Falls River. In South Burwick, off of Old Fields Road, the project is about. Consists of about seventy-one acres of uplands, and. A quarter mile of river frontage, and also eleven acres of tidal wetlands and marshes, and, okay, so we can advance.
Can you share your screen in the Zoom?
Okay, well.
I think it's a yellow green.
So the property is mostly forested, it does have a meadow out on. On the road, at Old Fields Road, and of course, that bottom picture that you're looking at is the tidal marshland. And that's what's significant about this, it's even though, you know, quite away from the ocean. About twelve miles, we still have, it's still very much titled there, as you all know, and we have salt marsh there. And next slide, I can show you the properties, this is the properties and how it fits into conservation areas in the area. The yellow, of course, is the actual property that we're talking about, that we're trying to acquire, it's just south of Vaughn Woods, Memorial State Park. And all those light yellow areas on the south, on the main side, are all the conservation lands that have been protected. And on the New Hampshire side, it's the same thing, it's conservation land, but they're in the dark green. So this fits in with a mosaic of properties and efforts to protect along the shorefront and the water quality along the Salmon Falls River. It's quite a bit of an extraordinary collaboration here between us and New Hampshire. And we're looking to continue that.
That's a full visual.
This is the parcels, and there's three parcels, and there are two landowners. The one on the upper right-hand corner is fourteen A, if you can read that, if you can, it's a long narrow one. That's owned by the Magnusons, and the other two are owned by Sarah Cullen of Porstman, and those are the ones that we've been working to acquire. So, next one, just a, one before then. Yeah. It's a forested natural landscape, and again, the update is all good news, it's been a lot of hard work, and a lot of stuff has happened. But, we got, the appraisals came in, and they came in within reasonable and matched our purchase and sales agreements. We just heard a couple of weeks ago, that we will not need the coastal accessory land conservation program, that was a federal grant, we had. Got accepted to apply for, but the, one of the contingencies was that the town would have to open, own the property. It turns out, we did not apply for that, we will not need that grant, I know, when I came here, you know, a little over a year ago, there was some concern about the town owning the property. And since this grant source mandated it, there was some discussion about that, but that will not need to happen, so the town will not have to be the owner of the property. We just also received word about our National Wetland Conservation Grant application was accepted, we had asked for three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. We do not know the amount we were awarded, but we do know, we did get the award letter saying we did get that grant, so that was, will be hugely helpful. And then another big development was, at the end of the year, Rosalind and Chris Magnuson, the owners of that long arrow parcel in the upper right-hand corner. Decided not to sell their property to the land trust, but to donate it. And so this was a huge development, so that was, I, you know, had been appraised at, you know, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, that made a big difference in the budget. So, those three things came exciting, so we're continuing to work under due diligence to complete the sale. And the purchase of the Cullen properties, and that's appraisal, doing a lot of appraisal work, we're doing title searches, you know, just the normal things. We're having an environmental site assessment done, I think they're going to start on that on tomorrow, on Wednesday, so we can get it done with, with not a lot of snow on the ground. And we'll be working to complete, those are the things that the other funders are requiring. With all this work, there's a different budget, you know, things do change over two years, and that's sort of the next. Next slide here, which I want to spend the bulk of my time here, and to give you an idea here, maybe have a discussion, I don't, I'm not asking for any decisions this evening or anything like that. But to work on this budget, it's been revised, but one thing, that I think the most important thing to the town of South Burwick is that. With the donation of the Magnuson parcels and the success of the National Coastal Wetland Conservation Grant. None of the town's funds are needed for the fee, fee purchase of a property. Great Works has covered the fee purchase of the property. So, one of the things that, in this budget you'll see, sort of reallocated the town's money, and getting back to. You know, earlier meetings that we had, you know, there was a lot of discussion among the council that they wanted. The town money to go towards the fee of the property and the free purchase of the land. But that's one of the things I'm hoping the town will have a discussion about among yourselves, and maybe get back, was, can we reallocate that money? Because they don't, they don't need it, if, if, again, this is constantly, that the National Coastal Wetland Conservation Grant came in and has fully funded them up. But I'm, I'm sort of confident it did, because I think if it didn't, they would have told me, so I'm confident, but we should hear any. I hope to hear by this meeting, but I didn't, so that's close. So, the budget has gone up a bit, mainly because the values of the properties went up, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, so, so this again, if you look at the town budget, that's how I've reallocated the money, as a potential for you to consider. One thing was the stewardship fund contribution, I had, we had most, we did have fifty thousand dollars of the money. In the stewardship starter funds, and that was to create the public access parking and trails. And I was hoping maybe a little bit more money could go into there, to cover those expenses. We also, stewardship fund contribution, to perhaps consider that, we will, land trust will now be owning the property, so. We'll have annual expenses, not to mention property taxes, and so forth, and the maintenance of the property, so we always try to set some aside for that, so that's the purpose of that money. Going down, just the list there, the conservation support, which is the third one, that's just our internal costs and our internal expenses to staff, you know, staff, heating, housing, and that sort of stuff, so. That's our, we, we've raised that, and we're taking care of that part. Fundraising costs too, we had quite a bit on that scale, but Great Works will, will cover that portion. The environmental assessment, hoping the town will help us out on that one. And, and, and help with that, also, the appraisal work has come in quite a bit more than I anticipated, more than doubled, and, and that's because we've done, we had to do a preliminary appraisal. That helped, you know, to inform the grants and the money we asked for, and then after we finished, we had to do all the appraisals again, to reaffirm that value. And now we have to have all those appraisals reviewed by more appraisers. So that's what that expense is, but. And so, and then survey, we thought we had a little bit, we didn't have much surveying to do, but we've been actually out there looking around and. Can't find all the pins and, you know, the normal sort of stuff, we have surveys for it, but we're locating on the ground. But we're going to cost, that's probably going to take a little bit more money. And I just caught up, this resource management actually is, to make, to make it fit on the page, I had that broken out in the earlier. Budget, and, but it's really just to develop a management plan for the property, control invasive species, put in, you know, build a kiosk. Find informational signs, and do that sort of thing, so, and last item on there is transaction costs, and that's just the closing costs. Which we've already encouraged, we did one closing, that, we closed on the Magnuson property last week on the eleventh. So that was a big deal. So again, we will complete this project. We have just about completed the fundraising, we had a, you know, a private campaign among citizens and area people, and it was very successful. A lot of events went into that, but it was very well received, so we're there. And I think the thing now is just to complete the due diligence, and have a discussion with the town about their. Contribution on how they would like it to be used, and what they see as the flexibility there, they, you know, internally in Great Works. We had some conversation of whether it could be used for anything other than the fee purchase, and I went back, in fact, if you go one more ahead, I did have the ballot question that. People voted on, and it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars from undesignated funds to assist. The Great Works Regional Land Trust purchase of seventy-one acres on the Salmon Falls River. So it depends on how you want to. You know, interpret the word assist, and so that's, you know, I'll leave that up to you, but. If, you know, the one question I had was if it, if you felt it just meant it had to go to the fee purchase. Then we might have to look at maybe doing another town vote or something, again, this has only been an internal. Conversation among some of us at Great Works, how that might work. But that's, you know, where we are, okay, so you can go back to the. Budget, and I think, you have any questions about that? The one thing that, of course, some people have told me right away, well, maybe the town doesn't need to put in its money, which would actually not be a bad idea. If we return that to you, but one of the things we've talked about, of course, we use that for match. You know, that's how we got the other funds, I mean, the other funds granted us the money because the town had put in its money first, and that was hugely helpful. As you know, it helped us tremendously with the knock of money, the North American Wetland Conservation Act, our first hundred thousand dollars. You were also the applicant to the Land Tremaine Future Program, and again, your money helped get that, that was a huge amount of money for L M F to give us. So that worked out well, and we also used it in the National Conservation Wetland Conservation Grant as match. But they all have to, their, their money has to go to the fee, they can't, you know, we don't use it for the fee, and we have to return it. Which really don't want to do, you know. So, so I, just again, I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have, or I can.
I have a couple of questions to orient myself to this, so the yellow column is updated, the one immediately to the last is the previous budget?
Yes.
Okay, so the Magnuson property, the value went up, but then they donated the property, so that was essentially a wash.
Right.
Okay.
That was correct, so all the funds across that, when you see the Cullen property, you go across all those donated money, that just about exactly comes out to the. One point six million dollars we need for the Cullen property, so we, you know, a hundred percent have funded that right now. That's, you know, it's really good news, so. You know, it's an odd problem to have. But it's good news.
So essentially, your question is. The two hundred fifty thousand that South Burwick has agreed to contribute.
Right.
Is no longer needed for the purchase of the sale of the land, but those funds could very well be used for.
Yes, I need to throw that next, that's correct.
Um. Just to kind of get it started, I think there's definitely, I mean. I'm not a legal expert, but looking at the language here, I don't, I don't see any concerns with that, but I think it's also a tactical decision, what is our. Yeah, Tim, wait.
It's exactly what is voted by the warrant, by the people, we can't change it, we can't do anything. And that's, what's here is here. That's it, to do this, you'd have to go back to the public, and you'd have to have the town meeting and changes. There's, you cannot, once the public makes a motion, vote by a warrant item, you can't do anything different than what the warrant item has been popularized.
Agreed, but I, I do think there's a point, Tim's point of to assist.
I'll run it by a full saucier.
Yeah, I think it's like a good question for us to understand.
Yep, I'll run it by a full saucier and. Give it back to you.
Yeah, just as a good answer. So the ballot question shows lots fourteen, fourteen A, and twenty-nine A, and I know that you said. One was it, so whose is twenty-nine A?
Twenty-nine is the Sarah Collins, one of Sarah Collins, she has two.
Has two, okay, thank you. The fourteen is the.
Yes, fourteen and, right, forty A is the Magnuson, yes.
Got it. And that's, that's. Your session.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just in looking at the other expenses, could you please just give me?
Um, just in looking at the other expenses, could you please just give me a rough definition of. Exactly what stewardship startup funds are, because that literally doubled from an estimate of sixty-five thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So I'm wondering where we missed the mark with like the estimate of of why that might have doubled or even what the stewardship startup funds actually entails.
Excellent, um, it's to put in the parking lot and we have a, we just kind of like a. I don't know what it was, kind of like a small pond there, dug pond there, that drains underneath the the road in, so we'll have to dig that up, do some improvements there. Uh, parking lots, we've been putting in a couple of parking lots and over the last two years and the price has gone up quite a bit. Uh, for gravel and excavation work, we're also gonna put in some trails and one of the things we thought about. With if we put extra money in, we might make trails a little bit more uh, accessible. I won't say they're ADA accessible, you know, not about that, but we could move the trails in that direction. To make them a little bit more accessible with money, but that, you know, that takes quite a bit more money than just cutting the, you know, just cutting trees and bushes and. And, you know, walking a path, if you gotta make it so, you know, people can't trip or at least maybe not in a wheelchair, but. Easy walking, so that's one of the ideas that came forward, um, and. And that's pretty much it, we don't know quite a bit all, you know, what all the expenses were, but that was it and um. So that's the reason, and if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, you know, I think that's, it's a budget.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, um. I uh, I was in line with what Tim had mentioned about the ballot question, thinking that we were kind of. Hemmed in there, uh, but I do appreciate the, the thinking of the wording, um. But wanted to do what is legally right, I I think is correct. Um, one of the questions I have um, is about the match. Um. Can you give a little bit more detail as to, wait. Now and could you provide documentation for the lawyer? Potentially to show that the money did assist. If it was a match, I don't want words in your mouth.
Right.
Could you explain?
Sure, all the, all the funders here, um, particularly the, the federal and the state. They all require, they won't put up all the money, they'll only put up a portion of it and they want their money matched. And like for the federal sources, which is the NACA, what they call MoCA, NACA, the North American Wetland Conservation Act and the North. Uh, uh, National Conservation Wetland Conservation Grant, I can get these all straight, they're federal programs, so you can't match federal money against federal money. So you have to have other sources and that's why, actually why the town's money and the, and the Land Management's future money came in. Handy because we use that money to match it and and L F money, F money also needed to be matched. So it's kind of a, you know, you can't double match too much, you can, you can match, like, we could use some of the federal money. Against the state money, but we could use the town money for either source. So that's why it was so handy and that's why I believe that, why we were successful with those grant sources, because we had that in, in hand. And that was important, we didn't say it was pending, we could say it was there and I think that's why we were successful.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it might be helpful for Bill to understand that.
And, and the only reason I say that is because Bill wrote that way.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I, I will send it to him and let him, but usually when they specifically do work like. Land trust purchase acres of property, Salmon Falls River, because otherwise than that, would they would have wrote the question, they would have wrote the question. I don't know, my mic's not working, would have wrote the question be a lot more generic. But they don't like to do that when we're spending the undesignated fund money, so they make it very specific and we're very specific for these lots. So I, I think Phil, I hope I'm wrong, but I think Phil's gonna advise us that if it doesn't go back. If it doesn't get used for that, the only way to repurpose it would be, just like we do anything else, has to go back for. Uh, town meeting.
Yeah.
But I will check to confirm, get back to the next council meeting.
Perfect, um, yeah, I think that's the first. Just question we need to understand before we take any action on that, what is a timeline that you guys have in terms of meeting answers? On that green column?
They, since it's not going for the fee acquisition, we don't, we don't have a hard, we would like to close on the Cullen parcel by the early spring.
Okay.
But we don't need the town money for that. So we're not really up against a hard deadline, I mean, I think. You know, we, of course, got, we're all excited to start doing improvements on the property and that's when it would probably come into play. Um, and so that would be maybe end of the spring, mid summer or something.
Uh, I'm just thinking out loud, if it is the case that the link, the existing language. Is not sufficient to just continue forward and we need to bring this back to the public. Um, we have the May town meeting for the June ballot referendum, which. I know it's a tighter timeline, but I think we can do something at one of those.
And if, if it is not and they don't need that amount of money. Um, certainly the town can do that, we have lots of projects going right now that we need it. Um, Tim could also, you know, come up with another. Other item that he needs to purchase, someone would do something like that. And ask the town for that in another form or way, we could still put on a May ballot. You'd have to do that, and that, you know, that's why I want to get the answer from the next meeting.
Yep.
And then I thought, it doesn't have to be, but you know, you talked about. You know, uh, other resource management or you talked about something else. You know, there, there could be other stuff that you ask the town to help you with, not necessarily two hundred and fifty thousand. But I'm pretty sure, any thoughts on that, William, the finance director?
Would you lose any of your other funding?
Um, I do not know that, I'm not, you know, I could, I do not know that. You know, so I don't, I'd rather not ask the one. But, but you know, if I have to, I have to. Yeah.
Yes, Phil, you did the warrant question, it lies at the town.
Right, but the, the, this one, this, I've never seen a warrant question change after the vote.
Right, yeah. I mean, that's why I think we, yeah, I think, I think we have time and that's one of the purposes why I was, I'm happy to be on this agenda this evening because I. I assume there would have to be some discussion and some exploration of that question. So I think that would work.
It sounds like great progress, but really exciting about the Magnuson property.
Yeah.
Um, the donation, so, so thank you for the update, this is great. Um, and I think this will probably be a standing item for us for a little while until we. Get all the answers.
Okay, so if you need me to have, come back, just let me know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Did anyone else have any last questions for Tim? Um, all right, uh, up next we have a. Discussion, sorry, presentation uh, regarding Stella and recycling, um, Tim, I'm just gonna. End it over to you.
Um. Yes, none of here, so, uh, we met, myself, Jen, Jay. Uh, we met with the cell transfer station as an outset. Um, to get their thoughts on our operations, equipment, site review. Who's sending us a formal report on their ideas and how to improve our service better. Um, several of the items I need, you know, that I want to bring to council, the public. That they stated recycling is environmentally friendly, but it's costly and expensive. That's the reality, people don't realize, but that's what it is. They said our hours are unusually long and suggestions short days will help probably with staffing with twelve hour days. But the only ones who run twelve hour days are up here. Um. We also met with the land equipment regarding the cardboard bale for alternatives. Where they talked to us and I think we mentioned that about having a, a big cardboard bale on. Figure one, um, so we have the cell, the kind that send us any facts included in your paperwork, their email and their chats. But overall, what do they do with their recyclables? So cardboard, mixed paper, a hundred percent shipped domestically to Canadian and US paper mills to make new boxes. Um. High plastic, no drugs, detergent bottles, they call them the twos. They ship domestically to a plastic process in Alabama and make a variety of new plastic. Products, cop out, bucket toys, just about everything. PET is number one, that's water bottles, it's plain water bottles, shipped domestically to make new water bottles. Police comforting, hats, socks, clothing, comforting. Tended to ship domestically to make new tin cans, aluminum is the one true commodity that can be recycled over and over. Not lose any yield, um, sold domestically to make new cars. Uh, tubs and lids, mostly number five, it's uh, number five with three and seven plastic. That's also shipped domestically to Alabama, uh, they make recycled paint cans, they sell to Home Depot. And glass, the only insight in the Northeast uh, closed the stores a few years ago for recycled glass. Those glasses being sent for roadwork and construction sites for, for to cover landfill. Um, investments are being made in Casalo's equipment to make certain size and specification so they can reuse it. Uh, it's a commodity of most concern right now, we're soliciting help from legislators and the private sector trying to make. Make it used for spent blocks and new glass bottles. So at this particular point, we, we opened our glass. Um. Uh, we didn't do the glass crusher, but we put holes in the floor, the glass will now go down into the bin again down below. Um, it just, it's just gonna get broken down there, Jay will scoop it up to the, the uh, um.
Backhoe.
Yeah, backhoe and put it in a, put it in a big, a separate big dumpster and when it's full, Casalo will haul, they all, please. It's being refurbished on recycle, but still getting rid of it, so. Questions, thoughts, ideas?
I guess my question is, first of all, this is, I love to know where things are going, but. Is. Is Capella our current?
Sure.
That's where our current contract is, so this is the current situation?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess like I, I'm curious, like what are, what are we looking to do with this information, because it, there's something about like single serve or. Uh, single sort recycling.
So, we're, we're just trying to figure out our operation, okay?
Got it.
And so right now we're separating plastics, we separate glass, we separate cardboard, paper. All of what is, is other towns, most other communities do single sort recycling. Except for cardboard where it goes in, everything plastic, everything paper goes into one container. And then it's, Casello takes it to a recycling facility and separates it out on the conveyor belt.
Yeah.
It's more expensive to haul, but it's less expensive for us to operate, we don't have to have the staff. Right now we have to have someone at the cardboard machine, the plastic machine, the tin and metal. And we just hired a new girl for the office to do the, to sit at the office doing paperwork, so. We're at a minimum of four people, when most transfer stations are around with one or two. So we're just trying to figure out how and why it's costing or it's so labor intensive here.
So we're essentially doing sorting for four against.
Correct, exactly, absolutely. Right, there is another option, we're looking again, we're just talking, and part of this is. Because I'm negotiating the contract with Casolo right now for next year or for the next ten years. But we're trying to figure this out, another opportunity that we have really researched, we're trying to find a time to talk about is universal waste. Where they just, you put everything on the curb side, recycling in one and trash in another and everybody gets, we go pick up everybody's trash. That's expensive. Um, but trash, no matter what we do, this is gonna be expensive, there's nothing I can get out of this, there's nothing. We gotta pay for it, pay for shipping costs, right now shipping costs with diesel and trucks and personnel and people and wages and employees. Killing us, possible to lock the money to haul our trash away. And so I just, I just wanted to, we're gonna keep researching this to get better answers. We're hoping to have Casolo come out on a weekend in May to do presentations on recycling and what people and how they, they can get recycled stuff. Show them what needs to be cleaned, um, what is clean plastic and all that stuff and what, you know, cardboard, what's, you know, where do pizza boxes go?
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna come out and do some education for us, to help us. Um, we're just trying to figure out how we can streamline the operation to be as cost efficient as possible to that, that day. Just letting you know what we're doing, it's, yeah.
So no, um, no action needed.
No action needed.
Um, I wanna.
It's just an FYI.
But I, one just thought I had, because like this right up here, what goes where? I feel like the community would love to know, like some people, like I don't know if we post it on the Facebook page or something to be like.
Yeah.
Cardboard is going to. Click that to make me buy this, you know, um.
Maybe we should make this sign, put it up, put it up.
Thanks.
You know, so people can see right there, this is where your stuff goes, this is. And Casolo's got stuff they can give us, they said they have posters and stuff like that, so I think one of the main things, I think. That has been. Nest or, or a lot here, a lot here is. Education on recycling for this, the community, I think the community needs to understand, because people ask me all the time, why is the transfer station so expensive? That we recycle and we have to haul our trash. Once you dump it in that dumpster, it doesn't just vanish and go away, I have to do something with it. So I think education, this is the first out of it. Myself and Jen have categorized, we need to educate town, South Borough citizens and everybody. On how we recycle, the cost of recycling, what it is and how we can be better, do better at it, it is environmentally saying, you know, better. But it's also very costly. So, and, and I don't think the public knows that, they just think recycling's good, it is good, recycling's expensive good too. So I think an education piece, and I think this year, one of our goals, mine and Jen's, is to get as much information to the public on recycling.
And I have a question, Tim? They said a quick question, so our, my understanding is that our contract was in line with other communities for Casella?
Thirteen other communities.
And so we are negotiating with thirteen other communities.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys, you? Yeah.
So, that, I'm understanding it correctly. Um. Casella is doing what Casella does, right? Whether we have specific bins or whatever. Does that change what Casella does when we, we have the contract? That's what I'm not understanding, because we're saying that it costs more to recycle. But our people are bringing stuff and dumping it in different things.
Right, so they're, they're sorting it, they're doing sorting it at our site.
Yeah.
If you put it all in one dumpster, then we have to ship it to a different facility that sorts it, so you're paying for the sorting at a different facility. So, right now what we're not paying for is for people to walk over to the plastic machine, people to walk over to the paper, people to walk over to the. Um, what else is there, paper, cardboard, cardboard.
Metal.
Glass, so in other communities, what they do, that's an automatic dumpster, they don't separate it. You just pull up, everything gets thrown in and drive away, then Casolo picks that truck out, that, that unit. And then it gets hauled to Auburn where it's a, it's a complete recycling center, they recycle the glass, they, they pick the glass up, they pick the paper out, they. So you're paying, it's, single sort recycling is more expensive because they're doing the sorting for you.
Yeah.
As opposed to where having a public food and sorting.
But also, I would imagine with the single sort option, we have so much equipment because we're doing sorting here.
Correct.
That has cost, like we have to run those machines and then also maintain them.
And staff them.
Yeah, it's staff them, and so it's like a.
If you pay it here or you pay it when it gets hauled away.
Yeah.
The only cost saving that we really have, or we can find at, it might not even be a cost savings, it would be in my mind to. Decrease the personnel.
Mm-hmm.
And increase the cost that Casella does, it would be either a wash or hopefully close to that.
And another thing with that is like if, if we were to move into the direction of single door recycling. The experience for people coming to the transfer station requires less, right, because it's like trash. Recycling.
Right.
And card work, you know, so it's like, it, it potentially could be a, a better. Experience for residents, you know, it's a little congested, whatever, so, but it's also.
Right, so, well, and again, so like we, we have four people on the ship, three to four people on the ship. And now we, we took one of the positions, we took the gal, the assistant and, and the, we'll do all the cash and handle all the cash. So, you know, like right now, Gary Bennett was sitting in the back, I'll raise your hand, Gary, say hi to everybody. Gary works the cottonwood, so Gary goes works, when Gary works that day, he's on the cottonwood container. Then there's somebody at the plastic and then, um, somebody might be, you know, roaming the ad, doing the metals and the glass and. You know, helping people put stuff away and that stuff and we still did the household debris pile of land, it's gotta be done. And then a girl in the office, so. Um, when there's three, there are at minimum, four is often. You know, but that's four people that, that, you know, swallow the day, they're outside, it's long, cold, it's hot, you know, sometimes, but. Um, trying to get people to work there is becoming a challenge. So you go to other facilities and there's two people on it, because all those. Machines they use that single sort waste are all automatic machines, they have an automatic guide, the tractor gets so high, it just automatically. Compacts it. The truck gets so high, it just automatically compacts it. And people just throw their stuff and drive away. And the only person you have is somebody to collect the money for, you know, the, the air conditioner, the refrigerator, the tire, the, the household waste stuff. So, it's, like Jen said, it's fifty fifty right now, we're trying to figure out. So a way with Casella to give us possible, what single sort recycling would be based on our monthly tonnage hauls and to see what that would look like over. You know, compare this to what we did last year, if we took it anywhere single sort, what would be the offset cost of that? Versus minusing the cost of wages and the other stuff and see what that is. And at some point we'll get the information back and when we have a second, we got nothing to do, completely bored, we'll sit down and, and do that. And then get back to you. I just wanna let you know, we're working, we're working diligently hard to try to figure out. How we can best help the taxpayers save some money for transportation, cause it's, it's a tough thing.
Uh, Tim, if we did choose to go to single sort recycling, what would become of the blue bags? Would we still have to do the blue bag program? Or would it be people can use their own trash bags of their liking?
That would be your choice. So the blue bags were only done to provide more revenue for the transfer station because the cost is going through. That would be the only reason they did blue bags. We don't need them to haul waste, we don't need them to do anything. We can do regular bags, you can go back tomorrow. To, to that, but you're gonna lose that revenue that goes to offsetting the cost of the transfer station.
Is that a significant amount?
If I had to guess without looking at it, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars for the year?
That much?
I feel like there's just like a lot of factors that need to be, like we, we're still in the information gathering process, so just correct. There's a lot of potential decisions.
Absolutely, and, and where, I wanna bring the transfer station, trash, waste. To the forefront of the discussion, so that we're discussing it all, as much as we can. So we can continue to educate the public, cause the only time they're gonna know what is, the more we talk about it, the more they hear it. The more they hear it from us, the better they'll try to hopefully get to understand it. Uh, but I can clearly tell you that I can see from now that we started to look into this. There's been a, there's been no education here at all for the public with recycling and that's a huge piece we've gotta do. We gotta explain that it's good for the environment, but it's costly for the taxes, that's just the way it is.
One last question from me on this. So that this list of, um, each type of recycling and where it goes, that holds true whether we sort.
Correct.
At, in South Hurwitz or we do the single sort as well.
Correct.
Anyone else? Questions?
I guess I'd just like to under, I, as we continue to talk about this, I know that there are like machine issues on the transfer station, just to get a, just a few of. Both the facilities and what we actually do with the materials coming out, like maintenance and expected.
Well, that's, that's the problem. So the machine you bought evolved in, with the exception of, Gary, do you know any compact or track compact, so was that new or was that used? Well, we can now, that's refurbished. That was refurbished? Yeah. So all of them over there were refurbished. They were all used and they've been here for a lot of years. And that's, that's the whole, again, that's the issue we go back to. You know, so the maintenance is simply, we don't do the maintenance on them, we have them tested and certified every year. And if something goes wrong, we have to call Atlantic Recycling or go to vendors and have that come out. Um, and then we're, they're getting, which is why, when they came out, they looked at the. Plastic one, they said that has to be replaced. It's, the seams are, are clean already, we hit the side left. So that one's gonna be done and, you know, looking at the cardboard one that we got, the new one is too, way too small for what we, volume we have. Um, so that was the, the option was to have Casella come out, they have to come out and look at everything and tell us. What do we do here? This isn't crane service, you guys, somebody's done it before. Everybody around us is doing, a lot of people are doing single sort recycling, Burrow, North Burrow. Elliot, a lot of people doing single sort recycling. There's only one or two people on, you know.
With the single sort recycling, um, and the equipment associated with that, is that, um. What am I trying to say? Like would we have to put up the upfront costs for that equipment? And then is there like any kind of maintenance contract with Casella as far as the maintenance of single sort recycling equipment? Do they know we have quite the burden with all of this old refurbished equipment of, you know, constantly maintaining it? And so if moving to single sort recycling offers up. Any. Warranties or anything, anything like that?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. So the equipment, the equipment we would get would be updated, newer equipment, it may not be brand new. But what it would be is it would be, it's all automated, it's, it's time tested in another town. So there, essentially what we do, you know, the compact, you fill the truck blue bags in. It would be that for recycling, be the same thing for recycling. You throw it in and then all goes in one, so you'd, you'd have, you'd have the blue bags go now. You'd have one for everything else and then you'd have the cardboard. And those two are, those other two would be automatic machines, unlike the blue bag cycle one, you push the button and. To pack compacts, those two would have electric guide. So they're all self motivated, just, once they get to a certain level, it just goes. But they would all be new machines with better warranties, newer equipment, newer safety equipment. They haul a lot more, hence is the problem, right? Haul a lot more. You haul more, the tonnage rate goes up. So that's why we gotta get Casella to see if they can run the numbers while we're looking. But I just, I'm just gonna keep this on agenda, I'm gonna keep talking to you about trash and recycling. So that we, we become experts at it, so that the council, the citizens can come to the council. And that you're the experts at it as well. You know, what I'm gonna do that is I'm gonna learn and teach you folks and help folks.
Good, sure.
Sounds good.
Just had another, just one more comment. As we continue, I appreciate you bringing this to us and keeping it there, you know, in front of us. Um, as we continue upon with it, I'm sure you will, but could you do an operations? Roundup for us, like when it snows, what it's costing us to, lot of snow and, and. Cost for doing the maintenance all the way around, so we are able to speak, um, educated. To our, the, the town saying, look at all of what it takes to do the transfer station. Is what we're, what we're dealing with. Um, I think that would be helpful, um, as, as we go down the line.
So, so my goal, and once I get the information from Casella and I do a few more negotiations with them. Um, I, I have a tour next week with Eco Maine, we're, we're talking to them. My goal would be sometime in mid to late spring, closer to town, anytime. Would be to do, I wanna do a, I wanna do a presentation for you folks, have Casella come down. And I have Atlantic Recycling come in and we can talk, we'll talk about the whole piece. And what the plan would look like going forward, what would be the best resolve. I'm not smart enough to give you all those answers right at the moment, but I'm hoping that we can all get that in the future and know a whole lot more about trash than we ever want to.
All right.
Uh, Tim, is Casella our only option for commercial trash?
No, we have Eco Maine and there's a potential for a third vendor out of Mass, out of New Hampshire. So, the biggest issue again, and I'll, and I'll say this again, right now there's only one landfill in the state of Maine. And it's scheduled to close in twenty thirty-four. And Casella runs that land, so Casella is negotiating with Maine DUP, Wire and Oil Protection. Either have them start, get licensing ready to go, cause it takes about five years to license a new site. They want the legislator to vote on a new site in twenty-eight, get it started, so it'll be ready to go in thirty-four. Cause in thirty-four, they're closing it down. And, you know, you know how the state works, just saying, sometimes it gets dragged down. So, and, you know, there's a lot, a lot out there with it to do with trash. I could spend my whole week doing trash.
Okay. So I think it's just important to just to round up this topic, that this is like gonna be an ongoing conversation. And potentially presented here is just one vendor, just one piece of information. We're continuing to gather more information. Doesn't mean there's changes necessarily coming to the transfer station, but we're exploring. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, number three, interpellations downtown revitalization update. Who's talking about that?
I. I suppose I can.
Thank you.
Um, so the downtown revitalization, um, advisory committee held a successful public workshop on January eighteenth. There were about seventy-five attendees. It was fantastic, cause it was a cold evening in January. And we had some really enthusiastic, um, community members who spent time with us. So, um, there is now a, for folks who missed that public workshop or that public, um, working session forum. Um, we have a survey that's available through the town's website. Uh, again, it's providing background information, like why have we been tasked to do this at all? It's putting another piece of the puzzle together to enable the community to reach out for grant funding, to do the things that we need to do, like fix our sidewalks. Um, so following the compilation of the public, um, workshop and the survey results. Um, the committee will continue to work with Wright Pierce, who is the town's consultant for the project. And, um, we will be, um, putting together a public workshop for the draft plan in May of twenty twenty-four. Um, so that workshop will help, um, will relay our findings for what we've found for the survey process and the workshop. And the community will have a chance to weigh everything that we've found. Um, at that point, we'll continue on with our process and then we will hope to have a, um, final plan available by the fall of September. So, no, um, Council of Casella has any other comments about the process?
No, I just think the most important thing, um, that needs to be said is just get involved. Um, do the survey, do the questionnaire, um, come to the next public workshop. Um, and folks, just cause you're not on the committee, uh, you can come and listen to the committee meetings. You just aren't allowed to, um, speak unless there's a topic of discussion that you maybe, um, have some expertise on and the committee might reach out to you. Um, you know, for a little bit of, of input, but, uh, it's. Everybody, it's, this is your town and you are the ones that will decide what is made of it. And. It's just important, like I said, let's get involved and I wanna see a lot more faces at the next workshop. And I wanna see, uh, thousands of those, uh, surveys and questionnaires be returned. Please, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, um, all right, moving on to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make comment about something on the agenda?
Uh, Tamara Stein Howard, nineteen Hill Drive. I don't know how you qualify whether it's on the agenda or not. I have a question about, um, who paid for the childcare for the revitalization meeting?
That was voted on by the, um, committees, so the using TIP funds for that.
And is that something that's gonna happen going forward?
Um, we will have another, I mean, as we prepare for our May workshop, if that's another action item that the committee wants to, to vote on, um.
So do TIP funds exist already for that and they're drawing out of that? Or is that something that we cover as taxpayers and then get reimbursed or? How is that what?
TIP funds already exist. So the TIP is, is, um, money, plenty of money in the TIP fund for that, but not for that.
Okay.
And to do with downtown revitalization, if there's anything that comes up, for instance, the food, the daycare, all this stuff, that can be billed back to the TIP fund money, which is raised for that purpose. It's, it's raised for downtown revitalization project or projects within the TIPS, the whole thing.
Okay.
So it does, it, so to spend the money out of the TIP, town council has to approve it. When we wrote the TIP, we had to write in exactly what we could spend the money on, not, not for penny, but, you know, for actions like for the downtown revitalization plan for. You know, the street lights, the street projects, all that stuff, downtown facade project, we have to put all that stuff in. But that is, those expenditures, um, are controlled by the council. The council is allowed, they have to vote to approve. Expenditures, so that expenditure will come before the council when it's on the next, all over the air. It's in the next, it'll be in the next thing, they have to approve that. Um, so they, they control the money going up to by the town, um, charter. They, every year in the town warrant, at the town meeting, there's a warrant question that allows us, the, uh, the town council rather. To vote, uh, vote money in, to spend money out of the TIP for the money, for the purposes that it's raised for. So it's raised by, it's, it's approved by the state. We have to raise it, you know, we raise it to the TIP and it has to be spent on exactly what that criteria is and it gets audited by the state each year. We can't go out and spend it. We could take TIP money and go spend it on. A couple of it on the back road or something goofy. It, it has to be what's in the TIP project and that, that stuff. Stuff for the downtown revitalization, the street lights, um, what else have we put in there?
There's multiple different things you can spend, anything in the TIP area or anything leading up to the TIP area, sidewalk, roads, facades, there's a lot.
Correct.
Right, I just was curious how childcare fit into that, that's all.
It was an incentive to have more public be able to join the workshop.
So are, is this, is town hall in a TIP?
Yes, it is.
So why couldn't we do daycare for town council people or planning people? I mean, why, why was the revitalization group?
Cause it's a specialized project, a starting routine of reoccurring events. It's a specialized project, that we speci, we specialize, when we wrote the TIP, it specialized just for that. So within that project, they have expenses who they, they pick. Child care. And I don't even know how much it will like, I haven't seen the invoice.
I think, I think the key thing is the TIP funds can be used for the downtown revitalization project. Which we've contracted with Wright Pierce to facilitate these workshops. And this, that got lumped in as part of facilitating the workshop. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business number one, um, action on chapter one thirty, vehicle, vehicles and traffic. Sorry, action on chapter one thirty, vehicle and traffic fines and penalty. Um, we don't have any support.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a document, but it has a red line like this.
But.
We didn't tell that, Tim?
This, we can just push this to the next agenda then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, we'll do a next agenda.
Okay, um, I'll just make a quick motion, uh, motion to, to, uh, move unfinished, unfinished business number one, action on February thirty, vehicles and traffic fines and penalties to our next council meeting on. Very quickly. Started, thank you. Um, all those in favor, say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
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 I'm motion passes for zero. That's more of like an ad hoc thing, we're not, it's just something we're wanting to do, so there's no timelines.
Yeah, that.
Just, um, the, the unfinished business number one, that's just something we're wanting to do. There's no timelines or anything associated with that.
Yeah, there is. We're trying to get it done as soon as possible, so the chief can issue back, back the decision.
Yes, but there's no. Like specific date by which we have to get it done.
No, 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 no.
It just is to our advantage to do it.
Right.
Okay, we'll do that again. Okay, um, up next, uh, new business number one, appoint the registrar of voters. So, um, effective end of January, Barbara is officially retired as our town clerk. Um, so we have a few different administrative things associated with that transition. Um, so first of all, um, we have to appoint a, um, registrar, registrar of voters every two years. Uh, and so the requested action this evening will be to appoint Tyan as our registrar, registrar of voters. Um, effective February, expiring at the end of the year.
Started.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you wanna consider that a motion where you didn't use her last name? Or would you like a formal motion?
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna make a formal motion. Cause that wasn't totally a formal, formal motion, sorry. Uh, motion to appoint Tyan Bass Holy as the registrar of voters effective February first, twenty twenty-four, expires November thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Nine. Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion passes for zero. I don't know whether to say congratulations or. Time, both.
Both. And similar story, um, regarding the motor vehicle agent and excise tax collector. Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Tyan Bass Holy as the motor vehicle agent and excise tax collector, effective February first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of in favor, say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes for zero. Um, okay, and then, uh, new business number three, review proposed budget schedule, um, at that time of year. So we have to get our ducks in a row to make sure we have enough time to talk about all of this stuff. I know Tim and Jen and the staff have been meeting um, quite a bit already, preparing the budget, um, in preparation for a meeting with us, the council, which it looks like according to that, it will kick off at the beginning of March. For both the workshop, right?
Yes, I just need you to vote on the schedule so we can make it public, the schedule so we can offer to the, put it online.
Okay, any concerns or questions from the council? Um, these, yeah.
I just have a question, have we heard from the school district, I know there's a line at the bottom, which I think is great for clarity and transparency, but it says it's scheduled for May and a question mark. Have we heard from the superintendent now?
We don't have that yet, okay.
They won't, they haven't even started, they decided it by themselves, but they won't have any convert rates. Don't feel the usual microphone.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, um, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget schedule as written in our supporting docs.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye, Jessica?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa? Aye.
I'm motion passes for zero. And up next, um, the town clerk position update, as I mentioned before, um, Barbara is retiring after twenty seven years. Sorry, twenty seven, twenty seven and a half, sorry, sorry, I forgot the half. Um, thank you someone Barbara for your servant, um, you will be missed. And with that, we have to go through the top list to.
Yeah, so Madam, uh, Madam Chair. We, we opened the, the position for interview, for application, we received data application, we went through the initial interview process. Yesterday, the committee, the interview committee met, uh, there was nine on interview committee, we uh, scheduled two candidates, one backed out. The first candidate was Diane, we interviewed Diane. So after the committee meeting, I met with the committee and committee recommendation uh, in its totality to uh, me to appoint Diane as the next town clerk for the town of South Burwick. So my recommendation to the council tonight is that I'm going to ask you to confirm my recommendation um, to appoint her as the next town clerk. Um, tonight, I will ask the current town clerk to swear her in as an interim town clerk effective February first. Um, though you're sw- you're, you're appointing, you're confirming my appointment as the actual town clerk. She'll be sworn in tonight for the February first, so I'll have, well, she'll be interim town clerk. And within the next couple, two, three weeks, we'll set up a congratulations party, an appointment party where we'll do something at lunchtime. All the pot med staff, Diane's family can come. Um, and Barbara, the old clerk, not, not old age, but the other clerk, she got a kick you for that. Gary, did she kick you still? Yeah, I know she did. Uh, Barbara will come back and swear officially, we'll take the interim off and just do that. Um, congratulations Diane, I know that uh, she's worked very hard in the last three years to get all certifications. She's got some eating challenges ahead of her, uh, part of the presidential election, but um, has the committee identified you, you're on the committee, so let me speak. Um, you have a great team around you that's supporting you, um, and yesterday all nine of the team members wanted to stress that they're there for you and they're there, they have you there. So that's what we have by working here as a family, so Madam Chair, anything you'd like to add?
Um, and I just, I looked at him that I was part of the interview, interview committee along with John. Um, and we were all thrilled to appoint, um, or vote in favor of um, making Diane our official town clerk. Um, and let Tim bet, you know, we've got a good team going on here and excited for the view go.
So at this point, I'd like to ask the current town clerk, which is sitting in the audience, Barbara Bennett, twenty seven and a half years. Diane Dobson Bowley, to come up to the microphone at the podium, please. Yeah, picture.
Oh, yeah, let's.
Barbara, you'll have to come over here on my side or eight on one side, let me see where, which one is. I'm trying to, you'll stay here. All right, you stand here, you stand there, and you do your thing.
All righty, can you raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye?
Aye.
Speak up.
Say your name.
Hi, Diane Bassopoli.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So far, I should continue to be a citizen thereof.
That I will truly record all votes.
That I will truly record all votes.
Passed at town meetings.
Passed at town meetings.
And all council meetings.
And all council meetings.
During the ensuing year.
During the ensuing year.
And until another clerk is chosen.
And until another clerk is chosen.
And sworn in my stead.
And sworn in my stead.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All the other duties.
All the other duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of interim town clerk.
Of interim town clerk.
Of the town of South Burwick.
Of the town of South Burwick.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you for different reasons.
I'll keep up my focus later and there's another one, so I'll, I'll leave.
Thank you, Barbara, for coming this evening.
Okay, and now Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to ask the interim town clerk, who's going to take over on February first, to say a few words, so come on. Let's do it, get started.
Diane, did you know he was going to ask you to do that?
I should have known.
Your first opportunity to present to the town council.
Well, first off, thank you um, very much for, you know, considering the that I can take the job on, I'm very excited to um, step forth in my duties. Um, I'm not really sure what to say is, except for I'm you know, really proud to continue to serve South Burwick as I have for the past three years. Um, I did move here in two thousand and one and I, I don't know, I just kind of planted my feet, you know, someone must never leave. So here I am, and if you need me help, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to give a shout out there for new helper Candace, because in the audience, Candace is doing a great job. So. Good going.
I agree with that.
All right, uh, that's the care of all of our business for this evening, uh, Jen and Ken, Tom and Anna, who's reported.
So the highway five and eighty six hundred and two tons of salt, the date. Um, dealing with a lot of ice spots around town, uh, Pupus Sand Road is on hold, weather permitting, doing any work out there. We've hired a new employee, Kevin Zarzinski. Been hired completely sidewalk machine and will be doing mowing lawns in the summertime. The police department had seven arrests, eleven accidents, sixty traffic stops. Um, we had the introduction of Erin McCain. Uh, she's from Sweetser, she was president at the um, staff meeting for an introduction to the staff. He's working with the police department, has the town's auction lead on for Sweetser. Uh, her focus is on substance abuse and mental health issues, she's here for the staff and now for people's needs. She is stationed at the police station, um, we have her contact information. Fire department had nineteen calls, nineteen calls in the last two weeks, near the date is twenty four. They've been awarded a volunteer fire assistance grant from the Maine Forest Service to replace some ancient forestry fire equipment, uh, total cost of project seventy five hundred dollars, of which fifty percent is covered by the grant and fifty percent by the town. Um, their goal is to get thirty six new forestry fire coats and gloves for the spring rush fire season arrives. On Saturday, January twenty seventh, the fire department responded to a first lawn building fire at one eighteen Nice Pond Road. The single, the single family residence was approximately six hundred feet off the road. And the family was away for the weekend, delayed detection of the report of the fire for nearly three hours. There were no injuries, however, the family's two dogs perished and the house was a total loss. Uh, she saw the family this morning and they're doing well, all things considered. Uh, the response time from the time the call went out to the chief arrived on scene was four minutes. Um, and it was from the time the call went out to the first fire truck up there and started going to operations was nine minutes. And that was a pretty good time, the national standard is twelve to eighteen minutes with a paid on-call wall at their fire department, so they're three minutes under the standard. They had forty four mutual aid counts. Responded directly to scene, among three mutual aid counts covered, and the chief puts a total loss of about three hundred thousand dollars. No one was hurt, great job by the fire department and mutual aid on a cold and wet, cold day. Code enforcement has issued two building permits, two funding permits, they've done fifteen inspections. She had five meetings in her office and she's addressing an issue on Liberty Street. Planning, they have automotive service final plan in front of the planning board in two seven, San Diego State's final plan in two twenty one.
At the library on Valentine's, on February fourteenth, there'll be a concert with Granite State vowel players. They'll be there from six to seven, it's a free event for everyone to join. Storybook Ball event is going to be held Saturday, February twenty fourth, from four to six. This will be a first time event, kids are encouraged to dress in costumes, adults are welcome too as well. It will be a fairy tale themed game with hats and snacks. Recreation, the first community night was this past Saturday at the Maine Mariners, it was successful, just under forty people attended the game. The next community night is at UNH on February second, and they have about forty four people that have signed up for that. AARP tax appointments are coming back, they're starting on Friday, February ninth, will be there every Friday through April twelfth. They're taking twenty appointments a day, this is a free service to anyone in the community. Their scheduling is well underway and they expect to be full within a few weeks. The seniors on January thirty first uh, is having a football Super Bowl themed lunch. Me next planned trip isn't until Saint Patrick's Day, they take January, February off for the seniors due to the weather. Um, and that will be on March thirteenth and then in March fourth. Um, in a second, Brenna is working on permit inventory to make sure that everything is ready for her permit pass, which permit is all the building permits that everyone's got throughout the year, she will go and look at all those locations that will start in March. Brittany, her new assistant, is working on getting all the property cards printed for the reevaluation company, so that they can go around and start that process. Um, which has been challenging, that she has to print them all one by one by one by one because of our software trio has uh, some limitations in them, we're working with them to try and light up. In the town parks office, as we mentioned, Candace, who's here, um, has started the beginning of January and she has already applied to become a notable Republican and a marriage officiant for the state, and that state has already prepared her application. Elections are underway, starting with the upcoming primary on March fifth, absentee ballots are being accepted and they'll be mailed out as soon as they are received in the parks office. At the transfer station, we have Briella Ward is our new administrative assistant, she started on January seventeenth. She will be working in the office, taking everybody's um, fees for any disposals, passing out, um, oh, selling the blue trash bags and any other administrative help that anybody might need. The cardboard mailer, as we mentioned earlier, um, is up and running, we're still looking at other options and other options for recycling as well. Economic development, as Jess talked about earlier, we had a great turnout for the workshop and the brainstorming that they had, they had a huge whiteboard and it was filled with ideas, great ideas, so I'm excited to see that, how it comes of that project. Um, in my area in finance and HR, I had eleven business meetings, forty three staff meetings. I had finished um, my annual reviews. And I also finished up with FEMA, I was working on the Christmas dorm of two thousand twenty two. Uh, so finalizing that, the last piece was the management piece of the Highway Director Jay and I's time of gathering all the information, so that was an additional fifty eight hundred dollars. And the total project is approximately two hundred and twenty thousand, so we'll be getting seventy five percent of that from uh, FEMA, federal, and employee emergency management, fifteen percent for main emergency management, and then the town will keep the ten percent responsibility on us. I got a great call last Friday um, afternoon from Pennybrook Stevens Bank, our interest rate was at three point seven five, which I thought was really good. They are going up to four point five percent. Um, so that's a big bump and they said it because of the relationship and the long-term relationship we've had with them. They don't see it changing anytime soon, as of December, we had about a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars of interest income. So that will become even higher in the, in the months to come, so I'm excited to share that. We are also uh, working on completing the workman's comp audit in our office as well.
Well, hey, business meeting, thirty five staff meetings. Um, we're on our second, just completed our second round of the budget meetings, unfortunately those we did. Um, went to store meetings with the NA team staff. Working on, I'm working on my portion of the annual employee review process and I hope to get it done by twenty thirty. Just saying. I can't get a break, yeah? I can't get, it's a pile I've been working on, I promise. Um, as we said, we met with the seller. Um, transfer station setup, met with two citizens on a citizen's complaint. Um, police department meeting contract draft is updated, we're going back to negotiations tomorrow. I hope to have something early, a draft proposal for you to look at, or to discuss with you in executive session uh, early February. Town hall tour with the IRPQ submission companies went great, very exciting. Jen took two of them, I took two of them, my class was here, asked a lot of good questions. They reached out, they wanted to know who our maintenance people were, because they want to talk to them. We don't have any maintenance people, me and Jen and Jay have maintenance. So they were like, oh, okay. Well, let's see, and that went really well, we're really looking forward to move that process forward. Um, FMPDC has reached out to the commu- community, recently a fireship grant program. Um, we're not going to be able to make it this fall, but we'll be able to be eligible next spring. So I started putting together uh, the process for two charter stations for the town. And I think that'd be a good next step for us to have those. We did the town clerk board boards. Uh, today I met with Eastern Trail Alliance meeting with Tom McCollin and a new executive director, Chelsea Berlin. Um, they talked about, there's two projects underway, one is uh, what are they, remember names? Oh, you're in there? Uh, the one that we need to, it's Berwick's the border, and so the, the first one is the first part they're doing is one that goes from Pennybank to uh, North Berwick. And then the second one would be from North Berwick to the border. That's going to be in the engineering stage in the next couple of years and hopefully to be done. Um, and that would be where, that would come through South Burwick and take care of that. Uh, we held Barbara's staff retirement party for the staff uh, yesterday up here. Gave her a present, a goodbye present with a photograph of everybody that everybody had signed for the staff, so she'll all forget us and um, I'm a little surprised, Gary told me she's already hung it up to throw dots at it, but anyway. No, I'm just kidding. She was very happy, I think, and we're going to do our second retirement party for the community. Um, and some more presentations, will be four to six at the community center on one thirty. And the presentation will be at five P M, so hopefully, I know all you folks had to work, but hopefully you can we can be there, see you there. Uh, myself and Jen worked on the two police lieutenant interviews, police department follow-up interviews is going to be next Tuesday at one thirty, uh, on, at one thirty, on January thirty, at the town hall, yeah. Um, and today while I was going to lunch, I noticed a guy standing under the broken door with the engine that had come down, hit him in the head, and I asked him if he was okay, and he said, yeah, I just kind of knocked me for a little, for a second. He opened the door and the release arm broke completely off and hit him in the head. So he came up to the clerk's office, he didn't want to fill out any paperwork, but we kept the door closed off and I called Jay in Public Works and they're going to try to fix it the best they can and what it is. And that's our report for town council meeting this evening, questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas?
Okay, um, thank you, and we'll move on to council member comment. Um, so don't forget to take your downtown.
So don't forget to take your downtown survey that's available on the town council's website. Also, just a quick update from the comprehensive plan committee. Our last committee meeting was November 27th, so we had about a two month gap until yesterday's meeting. You know, why are we having, why are we updating our comprehensive plan? Well, it's been around since 2008, it's out of date. And by having a plan that's consistent with the Growth Management Act, it allows us to enact legitimate zoning, impact fees, and a rate of growth or advances, and also can qualify us to, for preferred status for state grants. So that's why we're doing an updated comprehensive plan. We've been working on it for, since April of 2022. There's a bunch of folks on the committee and there's definitely a core dedicated group that spent a lot of time doing a good work to send out a community survey with over eleven hundred results to offer four different community workshops in April of 2023. Those are specific to arts, recreation in the village, conservation and natural resources, land use and housing and economic development. And that these goal, these focus groups helped us develop goals, policies and strategies for the draft plan. So we are very pleased to announce that we are going to be providing information on the land use to the planning board on February 7th from our findings. And additionally, a public feedback open session will be conducted in April to highlight, to provide highlights of the plan. So we are working, you know, working on it really long time. It requires a lot of different data inputs. Our report is over, of the draft chapters is over a hundred pages. So it's a lot of good things to come. So we definitely invite the community to stay up to date, follow along with the upcoming workshops and to attend our meetings. They are the fourth Monday of each one.
Thank you so much. Jeff?
Just wanted to say congratulations to Diane and Barbara. And also really kind of to the town, I was really impressed with the turnout. I tend to walk in right on time or a little late. When I walked into the, what is it, the committee, the revitalization committee workshop. I was impressed and amazed with the amount of people. So it was exciting to see. And had a couple of comments about the comfortable chairs too, so. Yeah, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Melissa?
I don't have anything to say.
I don't have anything this evening either. Thank you all for coming on this evening. And I think our next order of business is to go into executive session again.
Oh, I don't need to.
Oh, we don't need to.
Well, that was prepared. You did a motion today.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.